We call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Beth. Mayor Kavanaugh, here. Councilmember Leger. Vice Mayor DePorter.
Here.
Oh, Nick's here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
And Councilmember Magazine is not present yet. Oh, he's here. Okay, discussion with possible direction to staff regarding the proposed five-year capital improvement program budget. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, before you tonight, you'll be seeing a presentation of the proposed fiscal year 1718 capital improvement program, which includes a number of projects. It's going to work similar to what we did last week. You recall, we had the presentations from Kim Lee Horn on two of the projects. And so, the idea behind tonight is for you to provide direction to staff on prioritization, and if you wish to make changes to what's proposed in the capital improvement program for next year. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Paul Moot, our Public Works Director, who will go into this presentation. And then, if you have questions along the way, or regarding such matters as funding, or anything having to do with the budget aspects, Craig is here and will be able to address those questions. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmembers. As Town Manager said, we're going to be talking about the capital improvement program. The presentation is going to be broken up into two parts. The first part will be the projects that are programmed for next fiscal year, so FY 1718, and then we'll go into the entire five-year plan, so the next four years of the five-year plan. We're going to go project by project, kind of like what we did last week, probably not as much in-depth. But if you do have a question, just feel free to stop and ask me about each individual project as we go on. We are, yeah, we are looking for your input if you have questions, or if collectively as a council, if something wants to get moved out, or move forward, or funding priorities different for one project than another. That's the kind of input we're looking for.
And let me just dovetail on this, too. So, the reason for that is, once we get all that input, then we're going to be providing you with the draft budget for next year, of which this is a big part of it. And that will be, Craig, that's April 10th?
Correct.
That's correct. So, again, the goal tonight is, you know, to get those numbers fine-tuned and projects fine-tuned, and then by the time you get your budget book that has basically the operating budget and capital budget, then you'll get everything pretty much close to the way it should be for next fiscal year. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay. The first project is miscellaneous drainage improvements. You see this project every year. We have a $50,000 budget for just miscellaneous drainage improvements around town as they come up. The project we're showing here, this is the Shea overlook that overlooks the Eagle Mountain driving range. So, if you were to stand by the guardrail and look over the edge, there has been a channel cut approximately 10 feet wide by six feet deep from drainage that comes down Shea, gets into the parking lot, and goes over the edge. So, we're going to do, we want to do some drainage improvements to alleviate that from happening. And it would include removing the guardrail, possibly putting back a new guardrail, but also doing a curb, curb and gutter style to direct drainage towards the catch basins that's shown. So, right now, the volume of water actually goes around that catch basin and is cutting that channel. Any questions on that?
Madam Mayor, so again, on this, it's not, that's, that's just a budget. We have to do things like this. It doesn't necessarily mean that this particular project is $50,000.
Correct. The first cost estimate we got in was actually higher than $50,000. We're working with a contractor right now to get quotes under a job or a contract they have with another municipality. We were going to replace the guardrail with a handrail, but that's what's driving up the cost. So, we're looking at just replacing the guardrail in kind. Unfortunately, the guardrail posts, people like to light them on fire. And the guardrail, we get a lot of graffiti up here, so they like to paint the guardrail as well, so.
Councilman Magazine?
Paul, so what you're saying, I think, is that if we were to do this project, it's going to basically take all of the money from the CIP that's, that you put in here. What about the rest of the town? What if things happen?
Well, to answer your question, we're actually trying to get it done this fiscal year. So, then, next fiscal, if we spill over into next year, we would use some of the funding if we don't get it done in time. One of the other projects we have identified is the panorama wash, kind of behind the lake. The palm trees over the years have just grown very tall, and they weren't taken care of when they were smaller, like 20, 30 years ago. And they're actually in the drainage channel there, so, you know, we need to remove some of those palm trees. But we do have budget, in our Streets Department budget, that we can take care of minor things. If we have a large issue come up, we have to use the capital projects.
Not to push this too far, but if we had, unlikely in Arizona, let's say you had a 25-year flood, and we had all kinds of problems, what would we do?
I mean, if we had, if we had a large-scale problem, we would, depending on the type of damage that was done, it also can be insurance claim, but we would actually fund it probably out of our Streets Department. And then, we're doing it all the time, Robin Peter to pay Paul.
So, we'll see what's in the Streets Department budget, April 10th.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Paul, as I look at this whole plan, you know, of course, going out in future years, how we're going to pay for this stuff is the first question. So, putting that out at the beginning of where we're at now, looking at 17 and 18, we're pretty much decimating our capital fund, just 17, 18, let alone, you know, moving forward. So, the way I'd like, the way I will be approaching this this evening is needs and priorities. I mean, what are our real needs? And once again, as I look at this particular item, if this is going to be targeted, I would say that this is a serious need, because as I look at the erosion, and I've seen this happen before in other mountainous terrains, if that erosion goes any further, we're going to start losing asphalt.
Correct.
And so, with that being said, I would see this as a top priority, this specific project.
And Councilmember Leger, just to kind of dovetail on your comments about funding and priorities, I did have a discussion with Finance before the meeting, and the general fund carryover from this year into 1718 has not been programmed into the CIP. So, there will be excess general fund that by policy gets transferred to the CIP at the end of this current fiscal year.
Mayor, I mean, do we know what that amount is?
Craig is still working on it, but when we talked earlier, he thought it could be as high as a million or less.
Okay. Well, and that sounds like a big number, but in the grand scheme of things, with your projected projects for 1718, we're looking at a deficit of $100,000. So, if you come up with a million, you know, we're carrying over $900,000 into the following year, and you've got $6 million worth of capital projects there. So, anyhow, I'm not here to do a thesis on our financial condition, but viewing these, I think it definitely has to be very high priority, needs-based. Thank you, Mayor.
The next, the next project is one that we identified as being new, is the Civic Center Drainage Improvements. And the, it will add approximately 1,100 feet of 24-inch storm drain that's shown in blue around the edge of the library parking lot in what is now the community garden. When we went back and looked at the old Civic Center plans, this line is just shown as a future storm drain. It was never actually installed when the parking lot was built. What actually happened is where the community garden is now, that used to be a large detention basin. And the, right in front of the community garden, there's a 24-inch storm drain and three catch basins that collect all the drainage from the parking lot and the roof drains from the library museum. And that used to drain into the detention basin where the community garden was. And when I went back and looked at old aerials, the detention basin is shown there in 2014, or, I'm sorry, 2004, and it goes away in 2005. And in talking with the town engineer, that detention basin was filled in at that time to make a pad ready for portable buildings in case the town hall construction wasn't, wasn't completed. So, right now, all the storm drainage and runoff from the parking lot and the roof drains go into the 24-inch storm drain by the community garden and just sits there. And it will actually fill up and bubble up in a large storm event. So, we need to connect that back around to the backside of the community center. And there's an existing storm drain that runs down to Palm Norton. Now, what we don't know in where it says, where you see the yellow writing, there's an easement, and there's SRP and sanitary sewer in there. So, we'll need to do design to make sure there's actually enough room to put it in. If it's not, if there is not enough room, we'll probably have to run a storm drain all the way down El Lago to the trench drain right before it hits Suaro Boulevard.
You were doing some digging there, right near the community garden. What was that for? Does that have anything to do with this?
When was the digging?
Like, a month ago?
We were looking for the electrical conduits. There was actually electrical conduits run out for a future building there, and they were buried about six feet below ground, so we were digging to locate those. And we actually found them, and that's how we're actually going to be bringing power to the garden.
Oh, okay. Questions? Councilman Yates?
The easement that you're talking about, where the yellow's written, is that a setback easement? Or could you elaborate on the easement?
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's written as a drainage or utility easement.
Okay. So, just SRP or one of the other utilities?
Public utility easement, I believe.
May have something there that would get in the way of us going through there?
I know sanitary district definitely has something in there.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Councilman Brown?
Thank you. So, the red, the red lines, are they 24-inch that are currently in, in front of the community garden between Law Montana and the community garden?
I believe they're 24 or 18-inch, but I believe they're 24-inch.
Would, would it make sense at all to rethink this a little bit and possibly pick up the, which would be the south portion of the three receptors, and actually raise and change the direction of the flow going in front of the community garden, tie on to the one behind, the library museum that's already tied into the main one that goes to the lake, and eliminate running all the way around the backside of the community garden?
I guess I'm not exactly following you, which?
That's, right, right now, in front of the community garden, we have three collectors.
Right there, yes.
Right, right there.
Dead ends right there.
And it dead ends right there. And that obviously drains to the south. You're saying that it used to drain into the?
It used to drain right into the middle of the community garden.
Exactly. Could that, could that be, would it be more cost-effective to change the direction of the flow of that pipe and tie it into the existing pipe? If I can get this, which would be right here. There's an existing pipe that goes over and connects to the main flow. Would it be, make more sense to raise this up and drain this direction than going all the way around the, the community garden?
We could definitely look at that, but there is, there are some improvements there. We can look at that, but also, the, the big detention basin from Villa Estates goes across the street and dead ends right here, too. And there's just a little six-inch line that goes out onto El Lago, that dumps into El Lago, and we were going to tie this one in, too. So, I think if you tied everything in, it would, the capacity one, might not be enough.
Well, if we got into a situation where you didn't have enough room in this easement right here, I would think that it would be more cost-effective to think about doing that.
Yeah. I mean, this is just very preliminary. We, you know, once we have an engineer, yeah. In all honesty, we'd probably look at hiring a local engineer to, to work on this, so.
Okay. Councilman Leger?
Mayor, thank you. Paul, what are the consequences for not doing this project?
Well, how we found it is when we started working on the community garden project over there, we were wondering what was, was smelling and stinky, and it was standing water in the pipes. We knew we had an issue with the one over here. This one will overflow sometimes. And I never realized this one wasn't connected. The pipe that actually goes out here has been cemented off, so it's actually, it's just a dead-end system.
Does this have an adverse effect on the community garden if this isn't remediated?
In a large storm, it could, yes. And then, ongoing with just the smell and potential for mosquitoes and stuff in the wet season.
Thank you.
Councilman Magazine?
Plus or minus what percent do you think these numbers are? Not just for this one, for all of them?
The ones for, the ones for 1617, or 1718 next year, should be very close. I mean, we actually did takeoffs, and we, we did an internal cost estimate. We do add about a 15% contingency, just for unknowns, we don't know. But, you know, the ones that are closer years are, should be fairly accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
The downtown lighting improvements, this is a project that we discussed last week, and we're just showing $100,000 next year for any infrastructure improvements that we may want to do. We do have a local electrical engineer looking at the, what it will take to rewire the north and south side of the avenue to put those on a photo cell and have one or two of the outlets at the trees be on a photo cell. And then, Community Services will be talking with the electrical engineer that designed the median to see what can be done out there. So, this is just a placeholder.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Fire Station 2 relocation, we return the 60% comments to the architect. They're working towards 100% due in mid-April. We had a comment resolution meeting with them last week, and I believe we have a meeting set up for later this week, early next week, to start looking at our special systems, the fire department alarms, our IT. So, we're moving towards the 100% plans on this project.
Paul, when do you anticipate that would be put out to bid?
I would, June, about June would be a good estimate. And this has the updated rendering for the improvements that council made to the roof lines. Another project, the Civic Center improvements, this is around the Centennial Circle. This has been a placeholder for the last few years. We've been going out and grinding the concrete. Concrete around the Centennial Circle has been heaving. We just replaced three trees out there, and on the lower right, one of the trees that we dug out, you can see a six-inch root that's right behind, right below the concrete level. So, that's what's causing our concrete to start heaving.
Councilman Magazine?
What if we didn't do it? What if we waited a year or two? What's likely to happen?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Magazine, we have been waiting. We can wait more. We would just, as the trip hazards pop up, we would go out there and grind the concrete down. We're looking at doing some more of the grinding fairly soon. This has always been just a placeholder in case it gets to the point where we want to move forward. Does not need to be replaced in kind with concrete. We could do a different brick paver-type pattern, which would probably be easier for maintenance in the future.
Yeah. I, I guess I question whether or not we should be placing this in this year. But I'll get into that a little bit later on.
Most of these projects, and when we go through them, a lot of them are placeholders, and we don't really start them until we get direction from the Town Manager. Like, the fire station, or Darrow Canyon, or a road project, you know, those will move forward. But these drainage improvements, or something like the Civic Center improvements, or the storm drain, you know, we kind of wait and see how the budget's looking before, and actually, the staffing and manpower available to actually do the projects.
Could I follow up a question about, you mentioned the budget. Do I understand, maybe I don't understand this, but if we did all of these projects, 1718, other than whatever general fund carryover we have, is it true we'd be in the red?
Without the general fund carryover?
Yeah.
Per our estimate, yes.
That's what I thought.
But then, again, in the future years, you do have 50% of the construction sales tax coming in.
In future years?
Yeah.
From this point forward?
From this point forward.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't really think it's, our best guess is it's $100,000 in the red right now. But I don't believe it really would be because of the surplus that the town's anticipating at the end of this fiscal year, plus also construction sales tax between now and next fiscal year as well.
If I could just follow up one, once more. What would you categorize as catastrophic or close to it? What, what might happen that would say, "We need a lot of money"? Pump on the fountain, things like that?
Yes. If we had a failure, let's say, with the fountain pumps or something like that, that would be?
Anything else?
Certainly, a natural disaster. Flooding you mentioned would be a realistic thing. A road that might somehow have a sinkhole that causes a major issue on Shea, or something like that.
I'll, I'll address my concerns about this as we get further into it.
Okay. But just to Councilman Magazine's point, all of these, except for the ones you mentioned, they would go back to Grady. Would they come back to council then, before we would approve all of these that we're questioning right now?
So, we'll know, what we're really want, if you guys don't want these, if the council does not want these projects, we're going to definitely take that into consideration, and they will not be funded as projects. If you want to put them in out years, and that's what I'm kind of hearing with some of you, that they're not as high of a priority, they're nice-to-haves but not necessary, then we'll put those in out years. I think what Paul was saying, though, is in the approved capital improvement program budget, that we will typically, if there was, you know, we'll undertake the ones that council definitely gave direction. Like, I came back to you on the fire station. I want to make sure that you guys are fine before we proceeded with that.
Right.
Anything that's major, I will definitely do that. If there's also some question as to whether we have the funding available, I will also delay undertaking those projects. If there's something that is of a mixed priority, some council members are saying yes, and some are saying no, and it's approved in the budget, I might bring that back to the council to give us some final direction on.
Because that just seems like, right now, we're saying, you know, it's nice to do this. It might become a necessity, but maybe it's not, and we might get a few of those. And then, with what money we have, we might, at that time, want to pick which one of these we would want to do. So, is that how it's going to work, or would, would we just have to say, you know, we want to keep all of these in, and then the staff would decide, or you would decide?
The general direction that we've received from council in the past is that when you approve the CIP, which has been a fully-funded CIP, we typically will proceed to try to accomplish those projects. And I don't really anticipate anything different. What I would like from the council is if there's consensus, or this is a special session, if you want to remove items off, out of the CIP, or if you want to put them in out years, that's fine, and that's what I would be looking for you to do.
Yeah. I don't think it's so much that we're, I don't know, maybe, you know, you want to chime in. We're not saying, actually, we want to remove something, but we want to see how things go along with what we're spending. And then, let's say there's, you know, five projects that we said we'll see. Maybe of those five, you know, we want, might want to look at and say, which one of those, with what money is left, we would want to do.
I'll tell you, there's two projects that are the big ones that we have that is about half of the budget, or a little bit more than half, and that's the fire station.
Right.
And the Darrow Canyon. And as you remember, last year, we put in an extra $400,000 into that CIP project. We have yet to see really what those bids come back. We're about ready to go at the end of this, actually, be the first week or so in April, we'll be putting the Darrow Canyon out to bid. You just heard from Paul that we'll be putting the fire station out to bid, probably around June. But those are going to be really, you know, telling how they come back. And what we've done in the past is when major projects come in at a higher cost than what we had put in the budget for, then it does cause other projects to slide. So, it may be that they're deferred, or they, they roll into the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Magazine?
Mayor, with all due respect, I suppose I could be convinced, but the way you stated it is not really the way I would go with this. I'm going to suggest that we remove at least a couple of these from the CIP and put them off till later years, but we can get into specifics.
Well, we could do that. We could completely take them out, if that's what the council wants to do. I was just hoping that, you know, if we did leave them in, we could opt later on to choose which of the ones, if there was money left. There might not be any money left anyway, so.
If I may, given our fiscal situation, and given the fact that the money we will have is really general fund carryover, I think we should be building up basically cash reserves. I don't think we should be spending it all down. We have a difficult fiscal situation, and I know I'd feel better if we had had some of that revenue available to us.
Okay. So, are you, are you saying that this one you want to take out? Because we need to know as we're going along which ones we're working with, so that I can see if everyone else is in agreement with that.
Okay, sure. Which one are we on?
We're on the Civic Center improvements?
Yeah, that is one that I would take out right now.
Okay. Does anyone else feel that way, or doesn't, let's say, doesn't feel that way? Because I can go either way on it.
Madam Mayor, it's a matter of process, going through all of them and having Q and A, and then afterward, when we see them all, then we can kind of go. Obviously, when we know the Darrow Canyon and the fire station, we're going to go with,
Yes.
then we can kind of prioritize after that.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. You want to go on?
Okay. And then, just kind of to talk to Councilmember Magazine's comment, it is a lot easier if you just push a project out, because at, at some point, these projects will probably need to be done.
Yeah.
So, if you just push them out, it's easier to do that than to take them out one year and keep putting them back in. It'll, you know, staff, if we forget to put something back in, or it's, it's just this, this actually has been pushed out a couple times. It's just a reminder that this is going to need to be done at some point.
So, rather than say, "Take it out," if we want to take it out, just say, "Push it."
Yeah. I mean, if it's really a truly a nice-to-have thing, and you don't want it in there at all, by all means, take it out. But if it's kind of an infrastructure-type project that's going to need to be done at some point, because if you don't leave it in the CIP, and it becomes an issue, then we're going to be having to figure out how to try to do it out of our department budget.
You okay with that, Councilman Magazine?
If I understood it. I don't have a problem leaving it in the CIP, just when we leave it in.
Okay, that's what he said.
Oh, oh, yeah.
We just push it.
Oh, I'm taking it back.
So, we don't have a fully-funded five-year CIP. It's generally the first year of each year that we go through the budget process that is fully funded. So, to Paul's point, pushing it out a year or two would be an unfunded project, which I think would accomplish what you're after for now.
Yeah. Okay. That's good.
All right. Next project is the chiller installation. At a recent council meeting, council approved the purchase of a new chiller for just over $200,000. So, that's, that's going to be ordered here shortly, and that has anywhere from an eight to 10-week lead time. So, we're hoping the entire project's going to be done this fiscal year. We did put $50,000 in next year in case the controllers and the integration of that into the energy management system, which is done by a separate contractor. If that were to go over into the next fiscal year, this money is available. If it did not get done this fiscal year, and we did not have this project in here, it would almost devastate our department budget to come up with the, anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000 to actually do the programming. So, this is really just a carryover. We're assuming it's going to be done, but it gives us a little bit of protection just in case it doesn't happen. If something doesn't get shipped right, and the part's missing, and it can't get done, then it gives us a little wiggle room.
Okay.
Town Hall improvements, this is a new project that?
Now joining.
This is a new project that staff has asked to include. This is the shell space behind the council dais, and this is $100,000 placeholder to convert this into a economic development and tourism office space, as well as a conference room. So, that's just a placeholder. Until we're, until the Town Manager tells us to move forward, this is kind of just sitting there.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Yates?
No, I didn't have a hand up, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Councilman Magazine?
And I know we're not, we're going to follow up after we go through all of them, but my, would this be for? but my, would this be for additional staff?
I do not believe so.
So, this would accommodate Scott, and if in the event that there's future staff, it would be able to accommodate, I believe, two more people.
Is, that's not something you're suggesting in the budget we'll see in April?
No, in fact, Scott had an alternative to the staffing request, that would be a three-year marketing program with a outside company that outsourced it. So, that's getting us by, so, good question.
So, in that, in that event, wouldn't it be wise to push this back a year?
You know what, part of the reason why this was put in is that there's been some interest in this. The construction, the construction costs will probably be higher in the future, but this is not, I would not say this is a high priority. It would be a nice to have, and I think one of the issues that we have is when Scott is meeting with people from the outside of the organization, he doesn't have a nice kind of setup to meet with them, and a lot of these economic development departments around the valley, they have kind of like a really great office environment that kind of impresses people, but certainly we can get by without this.
That, based upon your response, that would be my position.
Okay, go on.
For the community services and parks projects, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Mayor.
Thank you.
Not yet, not yet.
I'm looking forward to standing in line at the fondue pot with the rest of the retirees, watching the chocolate cascade over there. As you know, this is a culmination of a project that was started back in the middle of the last decade, so we are close to bringing this thing forward. As you know, you were updated a couple of weeks ago from the consultant. We are in the process now of getting ready to bid the project. We are expecting bids backed on May the 15th, and taking it to you for consideration at your June 1st council meeting. That would allow the contractor to, about a month, to order any necessary supplies and mobilize, which we think is more than adequate. So, construction to start on or about July the 1st, and finish as early as December of this next year, or this year. With that, I would gladly answer any questions you might have. I can also tell you that the latest estimate I got back from, with the 100% plans, put the project at slightly under $2 million. So, we were happy with those results. We will have potentially some additional soft costs that go along with this, but on the overall scheme, they'd be relatively small.
And where do we get that estimate from?
Estimate actually came from the J-2, the consultant.
From J-2?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Go on.
Next one should be very familiar, we talked about it very recently. We took the information, it was provided, and according to Paul, he talked to the consultant with Kim Lee Horn, Jeff Krasky, and Jeff is anticipating that he will get a revised estimate back to us this weekend. The $250,000 that you see in there is simply a placeholder. We took the instruction that we got from council to try to create a sidewalk and a stairs that would accommodate both people that were ambulatory and those that were not, but in a shorter version of what we showed on the screen here, so.
Councilman Magazine?
Yeah, I had indicated last week, or last time we discussed it, excuse me, that I was somewhat on the fence on this. Some of it had to do, I think, with project cost, and when I see $250,000, I guess I was kind of surprised, it was quite a bit higher than I had expected. We haven't had anything like this since the park was created, and there still are ways for people to get, and they do this, to get down to the amphitheater and so on the park. And so, I guess I question whether or not this should be this coming year.
Again, just to reiterate that, $250,000 is just a placeholder, the cost may be less than that, we just don't know, won't know till later on this week.
We actually, based on last week's council direction, we asked for the consultant to further refine the numbers, just for that one proportion for the pathway to get down to the green and the amphitheater. So, for tonight's purposes, we wanted to have at least something in the budget.
Okay.
Fountain Park Drainage Improvements, this is the corner of El Lago and Panorama Drive. Currently has turf in there, and we have, as you can see, a sprinkler system in there. Because of the steepness of the, of the area there, we are getting effluent water that's coming down and running off of that over the curb, and then running to catch basin, and then over into the wash. And because it's effluent water, we need to have come up with a way to mitigate that. So, we've done what we can as far as adjusting the sprinklers, but we think the ultimate solution to this is simply to remove the turf, put DG in that particular corner, and then re-landscape with desert tolerant plants with a drip system as opposed to spraying the effluent water. So, this was, again, an estimate on our part of what it would take to complete that project. This, again, would deal with that effluent water that's currently running into a wash.
So, you have to actually take the turf out?
Yeah, we would remove the turf, because right now, the way the sprinklers run, the elevation is steep enough that the water simply runs down and over the curb and into the street, and across, you can kind of see it running there now, it collects in that gray area, and then filters over to a catch basin, which takes it over to that wash across the street.
How much of the turf are we talking about?
It's a relatively small piece. We actually took it kind of from this kind of an angle on this side, and kind of brought it out this way, and the same thing on this side, take it over to it gets right about where the backside of those electrical cabinets are at. So, it would look a little more finished. And then we'd soften it with some native vegetation, and then drip lines instead of spray irrigation.
Okay, comments? Okay.
Not sure why it's not advancing.
It's like next is Plaza Fountain Side Courtyard?
Yes.
Yeah, there it goes.
This is an item that came to us a number of weeks ago, months now, from the greening committee. This is an area back of Plaza Fountain Side, which would be to the south of this area. That sidewalk and trees along there are the, basically the boundary of the park, which runs over to the splash pad. The intent there was to try to develop that area, which we consistently have had issues with trying to grow turf in that particular area. It's always a spot that has a mix of turf and open dirt, so to speak. This would level off that area and create really two major features. One is the area to the left in the lighter color, which is papers, which would allow us to hold smaller events there, as well as Plaza Fountain Side, but also it would provide a venue for weddings that we really don't have now, where it's adjacent to retail space or restaurants that can in fact have catered events. Right now, it's either use the park or use the community center, but there's really nothing that's between the two. We think this would provide that, as well as obviously make the area more attractive to people. And then there's two areas there for, you know, play anywhere from bocce ball to any other activities that could take place on those turfed areas. What we'll probably do is astroturf instead of turf in those areas, so it would be relatively low maintenance in this particular area. There would be some vegetation, some retaining walls, but based on the square footage, we don't have a final design yet and a cost estimate, so this is based on square footage and a dollar cost.
So, is it this size because that's the area that you've determined is the entire area that will grow the grass, or is it encroaching on the part that grows? Because it just seems so large.
It actually takes, takes a little bit of both. So, it basically would eliminate that area from the bottom of the splash pad all the way over to where the sidewalk exists in back of Plaza Fountain Side, and then going over to the access trail or sidewalk that goes into the park on the left-hand side of the drawing there. So, it would take almost all that area, the area that you see in this particular spot would remain as turf in this area.
And where exactly, where, could you show up there, where's Plaza Fountain Side?
Plaza Fountain Side is right here.
Right there, okay.
This is the one that goes by right by Euro Pizza.
Yeah, the path, okay.
Yeah, this is the area right here by the parking lot.
Okay.
And this is the splash pad, and here's the legacy plaza.
Because I, I thought originally that we were going to, I didn't know about the bocce courts and all that, I mean, I thought we were just going to pave it, use papers for the whole area, so that it could also be used for the events that they have there when they set up their tents and all, they wouldn't really be able to do that on that section then, right?
We did have a representative from the Plaza Fountain Side also sit on the meetings, and they were supportive kind of a mixed use for, also to attract kids down there, as well as anything else. There was a feeling that if we could attract more families and kids could mix in, not only utilizing the splash pad, but also these other areas, it would make the area even more attractive.
We're going to have to teach those kids what bocce is, then, right?
How to spell it.
Yeah.
Mayor and council, also one other item, to Mark's point, the representative of Plaza Fountain Side, who's also on the board of the Plaza Fountain Side Association, had mentioned that they might also use money, they collect money from all the different businesses that would go towards having entertainment there, like concerts and things that would attract, it would be free, so it would complement the area. Also, we have contributions from the Rotary, they've already committed to this, $20,000, and so has the greening committee through the Cultural and Civic Association, another $20,000 from them.
Okay.
And then we're also looking at the possibility of grants to help with this, too.
Madam Mayor, so along those same lines, so that $40,000, I'm sorry, go ahead, Nick, or is that art?
No, Mayor, it's art, Coach. Mayor, just clarifying, Grady, when you mentioned that the Rotary is giving $20,000, which Rotary are you referring to? Because there's two Rotaries in town.
Mark, do you remember which Rotary it was?
Both these Rotary and the Fountain Hills Rotary.
I believe, if my memory's correct, it was the Noon Rotary.
Noon Rotary?
And I think that they were going to talk to see if the morning would go in on half of it with them, but.
He didn't get the memo.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So, the way this, I'm sorry, the way this is budgeted, is that $40,000 incorporated?
That $40,000, so it shows $265,000?
Right.
$40,000 is built into that.
Is the other that you're talking about right now?
Yes.
Okay, and again, we haven't bid this out yet, we haven't value engineered anything.
And we're, right now, we're right now into the grant cycles as well, so we're going to be looking at some other potential funding sources in addition to these.
And for information, bocce also converts easily to cornhole.
That's good to know, I didn't know that.
Just want everyone to know that.
And, and just to let you know, too.
One of those generation gaps, the.
The Rotary and others said that maybe they might also sell or sponsor like chess tables that might be built out of concrete or some other durable type of equipment. So, the point is, is that there might be some abilities for people, much like our bench program in the park, for people to donate money, you know, to, for those purposes.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I've seen that plan as well, and I think it's an excellent idea, and I think it's something we should support. I think that generating the traffic for the businesses in that area, and finally utilizing it in a way that we don't have to continue to have constant upkeep and maintenance to try to make it look acceptable would be a great idea.
Okay, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I believe that what started this episode is the dark brown grass that doesn't grow directly behind the center, right here, because the area right here actually is green, grassy, and does pretty well. I would like to think that we might want to break this out into two projects, this being the first project, making the brown ugly dirt go away and putting grass on it, and then the entertainment area as a second project, or I would like to think we should bid it out as two, so we can actually take care of our problem that generated the first thought, which is the grass that is behind the shopping center.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, you may recall that we've attempted several times now to grow grass in that particular area. First, we've tried sodding, and then we've tried seeding, and then we finally went in and took six inches of material out and put material and sod back in, and nothing grows.
And I totally agree with you. You know, you may want to look, we may want to look at something like some artificial grass. It kind of saves on the water and is green, but I, you know, if, if, if we have the money to do it all, that would be awesome, but if we don't, I would like to break this project out into two projects.
It's a good idea.
Okay. Councilman Magazine?
I'll probably be a minority of one, but that's okay. The reason I've been pushing to move, to push some of these projects back is that in April, we're going to be talking about and possibly debating whether or not, or how to raise revenue. And I think we could be shooting ourselves in the foot if we're not careful, which, what I mean by that is, things that are nice to have are going to be pointed to by the citizens. Now, clearly, the Kiwanis and others, the Rotary, they're all well aware of our situation, I hear it all the time, but the vast majority of our citizens are not aware of our situation. And while I'd love to see this, personally, I wouldn't do it as soon as this coming year.
Councilman Yates?
Grady or Mark, remind Councilman Magazine and the rest of us how capital improvement projects are funded, budgeted, and used. Use it, lose it, we can't take the money out of that for operations.
So.
To, to the councilman's point, you're absolutely right, but as you know, some funding, it's there for road streets, we can't use it.
Right, I was mentioning to Councilmember Magazine earlier today that he had some ideas, and, you know, some of them would be feasible, but the one thing I did mention is that the moment you start taking money that is set aside for one-time uses and putting into, you know, the operating budget, the rating agencies will look at that as a very negative. It looks like you're, you know, not doing a good thing, but when we talked further, he said, "Well, what if it went into reserves or whatever?" And I said, "Well, that, that would not be an issue." Plus, the capital fund is a reserve fund of sorts, so he, he fully understands, after we talked about it, how that might work. So, and one of the things I suggested, if he was wanting to do the same thing as it relates to the surplus at the end of this fiscal year, that that could be, instead of going into the capital fund, could go into other types of uses, it's just that, again, that should really be one-time uses or reserves, and not, not towards ongoing types of things, so.
Right.
Madam Mayor, my point.
Did I state that correct?
And although we, we speak the same language when it comes to fiduciary responsibilities, I, I, I don't want to get it out there that our operation issue is, is different than some of our capital needs, and sometimes folks group that all together and say, "I can't believe you're building a park," when you should be using that money to do X, Y, or Z. Not, granted, that's an extreme, but some of these fundings, and this is a prime example, this has been a problem for a long time, and so I, I do see some value in this, not to mention just creating a sense of space. So, we're saying the same thing, just reminding.
Mayor? Yeah, I, I understand, and I understand how it works. My, you know my concern, it's the same concern you have. This would be very, very visible project, unlike water, sewer, those kinds of things. This is a very visible project, and we still get things like the plaza thrown in our faces. I still hear about the lights in the park, I still, you know, where are you getting all this money? Where, you know, where's this money coming from? And you tell us that we have problems. I just don't want to create a bigger problem for us.
Fair enough.
Right, okay, well, I.
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I just would like to comment on this. You know, these types of investments, and that's what it is, it's an investment in the infrastructure and in improving upon the, the area, which is only going to create an environment that when people visit our community, they see, and that, that park area is the centerpiece of our town. So, if we're spending money on worthy causes, in my opinion, that is one that we need to allocate the proper resources to make it exceptional, so when people visit and they have an experience of Fountain Hills, that it's a wow factor, and it drives traffic to our community, and allow, and that's, and that's a spinoff to businesses, that's a spinoff to people who want to move here and buy property here. I, I would say that if we were to support a project in that particular area behind Plaza Waterfront, and we already. and we already have, as our town manager Brady had indicated, the HOA president and the owner of the building, that, that he's supportive of this. I think that we should support it, and we should get these community civic organizations involved. And this is no different than the investment from the splash pad, that money was raised. It's no different than the musical park, that money was raised independently of the town, and we partner with groups. This is going to help all those businesses, and it's going to be something that is going to draw attention to the area and its improvement. This is the type of, this is the type of project I support wholeheartedly.
Okay, well, pretty much, that's what I was going to say, so I won't repeat it. I'll just say I agree with Councilman Tollis. I also agree, though, with Councilman Brown that let's just bid it out in two parts. And we already have these donations, and who knows, the donations could grow, we can only hope for that. I, I think this is great for the businesses down there, and we wanted this for a long time. Well, just pretty much for all the reasons that Councilman Tollis just said, I'm in agreement with going forward with this.
Mayor, if I may?
Councilman Legay?
It's a, it's a, tongue-tied here. It's an interesting conversation we're having. I, frankly, I'd like to do all these things. And, you know, it gets back to what are our priorities from a capital point of view? We have a limited amount of funds, and we will have a limited amount of funds going forward. And, you know, as we look at our budgets in the past, and we look at our capital improvement piece of the budget, there was always an evaluation there, a priority, high, low, medium, so forth and so on. And right now, I think we're, we're, we're kind of getting, getting into what we prefer individually that we'd like to see, rather than the overall sum total is what are serious capital needs and where should we be spending money? And this, this is awesome, we've talked about it for years, this obviously may be a possibility. But I keep getting turned around, I mean, the path down, it's great, I mean, these things are all great, but what are our, our needs? You know, if, I really wish we would have prioritized all of these in terms of, for example, if we don't deal with drainage, it's going to have an adverse effect on the garden. If we don't deal with erosion, it's going to have an adverse effect someplace else. So, it, it's just, it's just very difficult for me to weigh in and say, you know, "I, I like this one, this is great," versus, is this at the top of the list in terms of our needs because our funding is, is, is frankly limited? And I think we mentioned the fact that, when you look at this presentation, it says, "This fiscal year, we've raised about $900,000 for our capital fund." And I would imagine we may not do much more than that next year because we've had significant building going on this year, and it will probably be similar going, going forward. So, I'm saying a lot, and I'm probably not saying anything other than, for me, it's a matter of priority, and I need to hear what are our highest priorities, and I'm not hearing that, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
While I respect Councilman Legay's comments, this has nothing to do with individual, individual needs or priorities. This has everything to do with our current structure in regards to how our town operates and funds itself. And when we improve upon capital improvements that will draw people to our community that will spend more time here and will spend more of their resources at, within our, our district, that downtown district, it's, it's, it's a win. And you look at all of the positive things that are happening right now, specifically, one that is really just amazing is the Copperwind development that we will be continuing to move forward with, and hopefully, that will go through with the approvals and everything. You're looking at a million dollars of additional bed tax, sales tax revenues from that project. So we have a lot of amazing things that are happening. That downtown project with Shay Connolly and all of those commercial spaces that we're going to be trying to, to encourage businesses to move here, these types of projects at the Fountain Park, which is the draw for our community, are critical. And that's, that's, that's the funding mechanism right now, is to try to get our sales tax revenues to go as high as possible, to, to support projects like Copperwind, support projects like Shay Connolly, and do everything we can so that when people come here, they have that wild experience of Fountain Hills. So, while, while these, these projects may appear as if they're, they're nice, it's, it's much bigger than that. It's really showing off what we have, and that Fountain Park is our number-one asset to bring people to Fountain Hills, and then they experience everything else we have.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Yates?
Thank you. It's, I, I appreciate the comments about ranking and, and what are our priorities. On things like this, I always go right back to our strategic plan and our vision plan, just like a mission statement and a, a, a vision statement of a corporation. And it, it's pretty black and white, and these are all, I mean, they're all over these on, on the different sections. But develop and maintain a balanced, equitable, sustainable local finance structure, which is kind of what we're talking about, but also promote a mixed-use core where residents can live, work, learn, and play in an urban-village setting, promote retention, expansion, relocation of businesses, promote Fountain Hills as a visitor destination. All these things kind of help me, at least, without some of my dreams of, of what can or, or cannot happen, but it helps me guide in this, those kind of parks and creating sense of space and economic development, this is what I ultimately look at, and, and to your point about ranking and what should we look at on what's the most important. Obviously, operations, if we have a drainage problem, we need to fix that, that's by all means. But if it, if it is within our means, I, I think we're following the, the, the plan that we all approved on at varying levels, so...
Mayor, if I may, with, with respect to the vision plan, a project that was dear and near to my heart that I was on many, many years ago, yeah, it's, it's, it's a vision. All I'm saying here is affordability. What's affordable? And we have infrastructure needs with respect to roads that are off the chart. And if we are optimistic about what Council Tollis said about future revenue, which is always a roll of the dice in terms of the economy, that's one-time revenue, we do have some significant needs with respect to our roads, which to me is the number-one priority for the people that live here. And it's not a million dollars we're short a year, it's not two million, it's more like five million dollars a year. So, as I was saying earlier, I, I agree, these, these are, are great projects. I just have to weigh them in terms of, of the priority.
Councilman Magazine?
Mayor, if I may?
Sorry.
Councilman Legay, the numbers you just stipulated, you just stated in regards to five million dollars, that's, those are not the same numbers that I saw when we went through the finances and we looked at what the shortfalls potentially would be down the road. I also question, and I think this presentation will continue to hear, all of these additional needs and capital improvements, but I, I know we had talked back in December in regards to the road maintenance, and you bring up a good point. Yes, we have to evaluate that, but we looked at whether we're going to be having zone, a zone management system, or if it was going to be more of a spot management system. And I, I, I'm still looking forward to seeing the reports as to which roads are the highest priorities and why, and whether or not we've had cooperation and some sort of collaboration with professionals in the industry, in the road paving industry in, in our community that could contribute to this discussion. So, while I totally agree with you, we need to be, we need, we need to make sure we're aware of all these issues, and we need to address them. We, we, we have to have our numbers really accurate and clear before we're, we're throwing out numbers that may not necessarily be as high as, as you've spoken.
Okay, well, it looks like we could keep going around and round on this one issue. Maybe when we come back to this, we might need to just take a vote on it. That would be the best way to do, because we've all could just keep reiterating this and, and have our own opinion on what's economic development, what isn't, what's going to draw people to town, what isn't, what's worth it for the town to do, what isn't. So, we'll just, we'll just take a vote on this one. We'll write that down as a definite vote. Okay, so, why don't we go on?
We are projecting to put some additional cameras in the area, including Centennial Circle, to deal with some of the vandalism issues we've had with public art, as well as some vandalism that's taken place on some of the buildings there. It's also an opportunity to provide some surveillance cameras for the community garden. We're also looking at some other park locations where we don't currently have cameras, that we would be replacing those as well. So, that's a placeholder, we don't actually have the project cost yet. That was an estimate that was more of a placeholder than anything else. But we wanted some flexibility to start to do those kinds of improvements.
Mark, if we have cameras and someone does vandalism, would we catch them? Would we be able to recoup any of the money from, from them to, you know, let's say they damaged something? If it's kids, their parents, or whatever, to recoup some of the money from it?
It's really, I'm here having, it's really left up to the judicial system, but we have had several incidences where not only adults were charged and therefore paid the fine, but their juveniles were also charged and paid the fine through their parents. So we've had several of those.
And do we get any type of an insurance break or something if we put cameras in?
That I cannot answer. It was more trying to avoid that issue, and as I've shared with you before, once we started putting cameras in some of the parks, we no longer do a vandalism report because frankly, we don't have enough of it anymore to, to justify. And it's really just located in a couple of areas like the Centennial Circle and some other areas, where in the past, it was much more widespread.
Mayor, I'm sorry, if I could just answer your question as well?
Yeah, sure.
We don't really get a break, but what we do get is, one is the deterrent, so it doesn't happen. In fact, one of the things we're going to be doing is, we're going to be putting signs up saying that they're our surveillance cameras. And secondly, we have, over the past year, we've increased our deductible to $10,000. So it's really, it behooves us to do as much as we can to try to minimize having to pay the deductible when we do have these vandalism incidents. Meaning, basically, we have to eat the costs of the vandalism to the artwork or to the buildings.
Right, okay. Okay, just want to clarify that. You want to go on?
I believe the next one, I will turn it over.
Alley paving.
Mr. Moon?
Thanks, Mark.
Back to the fun projects. Back in 2007, council entered into a resolution 2007-45, which actually went with MEG and their PM-10 reduction. And part of that resolution was to pave our unpaved alleys. The resolution actually, or the IGA and resolution actually states when funding is available. So over, over the many years, we've paved three phases. This is phase four. This is the alley that goes behind the funeral home and comes back out by Colony? Yeah, Colony. And we're at, we're really at about 90% design on this project. If you look closely in the, in the photo, there's an SRP cabinet right in the middle of the alley. And we've been working with SRP, and from the road district days, SRP has a blanket easement over this entire area. So they submitted prior rights, which would mean the town would be responsible to pay for the relocation. We have turned that into the town attorney's office, so they're reviewing those prior rights right now. But it is pretty clear that they have an easement, and it's on the plat that they have an easement. Fortunately, we met with SRP, and I budgeted $25,000 in this project for relocation, and they gave a cost of $26,000, so we're pretty close.
So who's using this alley?
Um, all, all the, all, all the businesses and the people that leave the...
There are a lot of businesses that are actually on the alley that are using it?
They, they have entrances to their businesses, and their garbage pickup is, is from the alley as well. So, it, it does get traffic. And part of our dust mitigation is to pave these alleys.
They just go around that, around the SRP?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's, it's smack dab in the middle.
Okay.
And we did look at old aerials, and at some point, it was off, it was in the middle, and there was growth that overtook it, and the growth was cut back, the vegetation was cut back, so now it's in the middle again. And about 2010, we put millings down, so made it more of a stabilized surface. But this project will, this will pave that alley, so...
Councilman Magazine?
Putting mildly, I don't like this project. And you said it's been pushed back in the CIP a couple of times?
Yeah, it has, yes.
And, oh, I, I know I asked this question some time ago, I confess, I don't remember the answer. Do we have some legal liability here?
Yes, we are under obligation to comply with being in a non-attainment area for air quality. And so, as you can see, there's a lot of particulates in this area. As vehicles drive through, it's going to kick a lot of dirt and dust in the air, which carries PM-10, particulate matter 10, which we're under obligation to try to do what we can to restrict it. So, and that's, that's air pollution, basically.
Have there been new regulations in the last year or two? How did we get to push it back before?
Well, we, we actually, as Paul indicated, we, we've done three phases already, so this is a fourth phase. And so, in fact, originally, this project, I believe, was, was it 655,000 proposed before I went through and helped add some other projects into the CIP this year? So, this was actually put in a higher level, and I had reduced it down.
And what is, and this may be for Andrew, what's, what's the worst thing that can happen if we were to push this back another year?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavanagh, Magazine, I, I don't like to answer worst thing that can happen, legal liability kind of questions in this forum, as you know. The non-attainment requirements for paving unpaved alleys in cities and towns is a progress towards goal approach. Nobody was expected to complete everything in the first year, but you certainly need to keep moving forward, and this is one of the ones that we've been putting off for a long time.
One la, one last question, if I may, Mayor. What process do we, I guess I'm asking, can this be phased? Can we start to do something this year in show-forward motion without doing the whole thing and paving and everything?
Mayor, Mayor Kavanagh, Councilman Magazine, if, if you start forward with this project, this is just one, this is just one alley, so you would need to finish it. As the town manager mentioned, we also had phase five, which is the final phase. We had it programmed in for this year. So we moved that out to a future year, and we brought back in some of the projects that you've already been discussing. So we did already move one phase out.
Could I get a different answer?
Well, you can't, I mean...
Ask it in a different way.
You could pave half the alley, but that wouldn't really get you very far.
Mobilization, you're double calling.
Yeah, it's, it's, you're better off just doing this one alley. If you're going to do it, you're better off, you either, either push it out, or you, or you do it. If you push it out, we would have the design almost done. They would have the, the engineer, we're using a local engineering firm. We can reuse the design, they would just have to reconfirm all the underground utilities.
Okay, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Paul. Have we looked at the possibility? I believe the land to the north of the existing SRP box is wash that's probably owned by the town?
Correct, this, this actually drops off into a wash.
Right. Would it be more cost-effective to build that wash up and actually go around that electric box opposed to trying to move it?
I would have to ask the town engineer, but we're really not supposed to...
You're, you can't...
It's construction in the wash.
You can't conduct construction in the wash without an election, based upon the wash initiative from 97?
I think it's actually in this, it's actually in this resolution.
If some dirt was accidentally dumped there?
It would require a lot of dirt.
But you said that they, it used to go around that way, and then it, it started to grow over.
Well, it used to go around, it used to go around the box, and then the vegetation grew up to the box, then it's been cut back.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
So is the wash right there, or if you...
The wash is pretty, I mean, you can see the edge, kind of the edge right here.
You sure it's right there, and it's not further down?
I don't know.
How much slack is in there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't answer that question right now, but it's pretty, it's...
I would assume that wash is a surveyed document, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown, we have, we have two issues. The survey document tells us the extent of the parcel of property, but the wash initiative just defined washes as the, the flow area, the banks and adjacent areas. It's a very broad definition that we've had difficulty with. It's a very broad definition that we've had difficulty with in the past.
We're biting this one.
This is probably better to just move the thing out of the middle.
And actually, it doesn't get moved, it actually gets buried. It's, it's a splice box, so they're just going to, they're just going to bury...
Twenty-five?
They're going to, yeah.
Okay, and, and this is, this is a smaller project, just, I know Councilman Tolles will probably ask this question, so I'll ask it first. This is a smaller project than doing Shea or something like that. Do we have any local companies that might be able to do this at, give us a better price on it?
Yeah, Mayor Kavanagh, we would, we're using a local engineering firm.
Right.
And due to, due to the price, we would have to bid this out for bids. We did an alley last, two years ago. We did phase three, and we bid that out as well. No, I don't believe any local firms bid on it.
Madam Mayor, Andrew or Grady, what's the threshold for mandate? Is it 250?
And for horizontal construction like this, it's a pretty low number. It's about 20 grand for, no, I'm sorry, for vertical constructions, about 20 grand. For horizontal construction, it's about 185.
For some reason, I remember 250, but that's...
We, we can find the number, but it's way less than this.
Okay.
All right. Okay, let's go on.
The next project is the Fountain Hills Boulevard widening. This is a project that's lived in the CIP for, for many years and gotten pulled out. It's actually widening from Shea, which is actually four lanes, but you have to do some sidewalk work there, all the way to Segundo to make that a four-lane road. Typical arterial roadway is two lanes each direction, center turn lane or median. Our general plan does show sidewalks in this area. So the $100,000 for next fiscal year is just to do a design concept report. That would have an engineering firm come in to look at the available right-of-way, the drainage issues, what, what cross-section of road you could actually fit in there. Will a sidewalk work? Will it not work? They would put together cost estimates, so then, in the future, if council wanted to go out for a bond election, we would have a pretty good number to be able to include this project in a bond. I believe right now, we're doing traffic counts right now, but I believe the ones we did in 2014, there was about eight to 9,000 cars, vehicles a day that use this.
And we can't do any better than $100,000 just for a design?
Well, it's engineers.
Yeah? Is that, is that a typical cost? I don't know that, so I'm asking.
It's actually just a placeholder, it's not for an actual design. It's, it's for, it's a report.
Siddles.
They're going to, they're going to have to go do some surveying, some preliminary engineering, but it's, it's quite a bit of work.
Madam Mayor, this may be an Andrew Grady question. With the state trust land and kind of the direction, thank you, wasn't that part of this, that, that mandated depending on density, and even at the lower density, what was that this needed to be improved?
There was discussion at the time on whether or not the, the property would generate sufficient traffic to require improvements. Whatever the obligations were, they were in a development agreement that's expired. So we'll have to go back and revisit that at the time that those properties come in. And we had the benefit then of a single master developer, so you could do a global impact, where if the property is sold in pieces, you're not going to have exactly the same ability. So we'll probably, if we get to that point where it looks like the, the land is not going to be sold in one chunk, we'll probably go back and try and reprogram this road in as a development impact fee, and just use impact fees to pay for it, because it'll allow you to bond for it and have a source of repayment.
Obviously, Madam Mayor, where I'm going is, I think the timing of this may be good to go ahead and do this, because this would make sense, whether it happens by the end of this year or sometime over the next two, we're going to need this information.
Yeah, this, this information, this, the widening is going to be a multi-multi-million-dollar project, so this is just to lay the groundwork for that. And, and to the town attorney's point, I was actually looking at our 10-year projections in the CIP, and I did look at all the former state trust Elmen property. There was numerous traffic signals, numerous drainage improvements, and one of it was some minor turnpocket improvements on Fountain Hills Boulevard in this area. But you would really need the full width improvements to carry the traffic.
Okay. Councilman Magazine?
Paul, for these three projects, the Fountain Hills Boulevard widening, shoulder paving, and Shea Boulevard widening, are there any safety issues?
Right now, the, well, the shoulder paving does help with the safety issue. It's one lane in east direction, and then it falls off pretty quick into the, into the dirt on the side of the road.
No statistics of any kind?
No.
Paul, is there any, is there any MEG money coming towards these?
Not for, not for this project, but there is some grant money for the next two.
Okay.
The shoulder paving project that you talked about, that's, that is a congest, it's called CMAC, congestion mitigation air quality, and it's shoulder paving that theoretically helps with dust, dust mitigation, so air quality. So we do have $255,000 in grant money. The caveat with that grant money is, is ADOT administers the grant, so the 60% design is, has been turned into ADOT. They're going through their review process right now. We have to follow, they have to do environmental clearances, right-of-way clearances. Once, once we get the project to 100% design, ADOT will actually bid the project out, and they will construct the project, and then we'll be a financial contributor to the project. But the way that CMAC works is, we are responsible for the design costs.
Just one follow-up, but good.
Uh-huh.
Going back to Councilman Leger's comment earlier, can you prioritize these three? I mean, is there something that you say?
Well, definitely the shoulder paving is the highest priority. I mean, that, it's in process, it does deal with the safety issue. We would most likely look at using the same firm that's doing this project to do the, the design concept report, because they will have a lot of the information already, help be cheaper and get it done a little bit quicker.
And how long is the grant for?
We've been pushing it out for quite a while, and it's, it's to the point that this one pretty much has to be...
So if we don't use it, we'll lose the grant?
Pretty quickly, yeah, within the next year or two.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Councilman Leger?
Paul, it's interesting when we look at the widening of Fountain Hills Boulevard, and I had a question there I didn't, I didn't ask. And Councilman Yates kind of approached this, that, you know, if there's one developer out there, there's always opportunities to work in a development agreement, and there were several items that we had in the previous development agreement, which you just articulated. Is there ever a point where, and maybe Andrew could weigh in on this, where they get involved in, in the design? I mean, for instance, if I was developing, one developer developing that area, and I had to look at the impact on the area, would it make sense for me in-house as a developer to do the design for something like that, to kind of see what my exposure might be, or what my liability may be?
Mayor Kavanagh, Councilman Leger, I have seen it where, you know, a developer designed, it's, mostly it's along their own frontage that they will do that. But if you had a developer that signed an agreement to do it, you could, I mean, we would obviously have to review it to make sure it meets our standards.
It's a matter of negotiation, yeah.
Yeah, it's really a matter of negotiation.
That goes to my next question. So let's say that someday we have this Fountain Hills Boulevard widen somehow, some way. Does that obliterate the shoulder paving?
No, we are actually designing the shoulder paving to a thickness that it can just be added on to.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mayor, another question on this project. When, when the town was originally designed for 70,000 people, was this Fountain Hills Boulevard always slated to be a two-lane, a four-lane road going in and out? And I ask that question because even with the state trust land being developed, I, I would think that we would want to continue, continuously promote Palisades Boulevard and Saguaro as the main throughways to get into town. And that Fountain Hills Boulevard really isn't necessarily going to be the, the one that's going to be the choice for people to pick and take. If you're coming in from Scottsdale, you're going to take Palisades to go home. If you live in the state trust land, future development. If you're coming in from east and the B-line, you're going to take Saguaro. You're likely not going to go to Fountain Hills Boulevard. So I'm just curious, is this, is this, was this always in the plan, or is this now just something that...
Yeah, Mayor, to answer Councilman Tolles, I can't talk about the original, because I wasn't even born. You know, when they started planning the town, but the 2010 general plan, and I'm going to assume the general plan before that, does show Fountain Hills Boulevard as, as a major arterial roadway, two, four lanes, two lanes in each direction. And then to Councilmember Tolles's point, when we do, when we do traffic counts, he's absolutely correct, you will have higher counts on Saguaro and Palisades, because those roads get used from people coming in from B-line, the B-line, or from coming in through Scottsdale. But I'm going to assume when the, the Elmen property came through in the development agreement, I wasn't here during those negotiations, but the, the people that live in the future state trust land, they will be using Fountain Hills Boulevard, and that's probably why the traffic counts that their study showed, why they, in their development agreement, were on the hook for some improvements to Fountain Hills Boulevard.
Mayor Kavanagh?
Yes, go ahead.
Nick.
Set. Councilman DePorter?
Being, I'm actually, I'm actually out in that hood where, over by the Boys and Girls Club and sort of that area, and I, I frequent Fountain Hills Boulevard, because I prefer it to Palisades, because it's so, kind of drives like a, like a crazy freeway on Palisades. Fountain Hills Boulevard serves as a direct shot for me to get back over to Elkwebow. And to Paul's point, I'm sure it would be the same for, for those new residents out there. And it has served as a entry point to Fountain Hills at some point, because it has all of our signs touting all of our great clubs and organizations. So it, it seems to me, has that big green belt, that it's an important, important road that we should take care of.
I believe Palisades wasn't pushed through, maybe Andrew, somebody can answer, but the late 90s, Palisades got pushed through to Shea?
Nineties.
Madam?
Mayor, if I may, I'm seeing we're on this issue here. When Elmen was on the hook for improvements, they were able to minimize their improvements on Fountain Hills Boulevard, because, maybe someone can help me with the streets, you know those streets that, I call them stumps that come in, and they go over to Boulder? What they were doing, and this is what was controversial, is they were running traffic out those streets onto Boulder to push more traffic on the Palisades, to reduce the, the need, if you may, for Fountain Hills Boulevard. So moving forward, if it's the council's priority to not open those streets up, then by default, you're going to have probably more improvements needed on Fountain Hills Boulevard. Yeah, little history, thanks.
Okay.
We're on?
Now go on.
Okay, then the Shea, excuse me, the Shea Boulevard widening, this is from Palisades to Technology. Portions of that are two lanes, this would go to three lanes. This again is a design concept report. This is, this is actually in the MEG Prop 400, so that's how we did the Shea Boulevard from, from B-line to Technology. This is the continuation of that. The, the original approval of that project was in the early 2000s, when the MEG came about, before my time here in Fountain Hills. Nobody has the old estimate of how the project cost, they came up with a project cost. There's about, the MEG Prop 400 shows funding in the amount of approximately $2.1 million, and that's the, the MEG's portion. So our, our portion could be another couple million dollars. I really don't know, because I haven't seen the original estimate. I did drive it with an engineering firm, and there's, if you, the reason why it was never done, there's a lot of slopes that need to be cut down, that come down, and there's a lot of slopes that drop off right by the road. So this is a, this is a very expensive piece of road that would need to be widened at some point. Doesn't need to be widened now, but if we want to get the MEG Prop 400 portion of the money, it would need to be done in the next probably four to five years. That would be pushing a little bit. As part of the design concept report, the engineering firm I, I talked to, we're doing traffic counts right now. They can do some more, but they would really look at, okay, what's the tipping point that you really need to add that third lane? Right now, you, the traffic volume doesn't really need a third lane. There's about 20,000 vehicles per day on this section of, of Shea. So that's one thing they would look at. And then the grant would pay for the majority of this design concept report. We had some savings left over from the Shea Boulevard project to the B-line, so they, MEG allowed us to push it for this design concept report. So that's how the majority of the funding is getting paid for. Again, this is, you know, if council ever wanted to do a, a bond election to widen this piece of road, we would have a report that shows what needs to be done and the costs.
Okay. Anybody?
Yes, Mayor, if I may...
Mayor, yeah, go ahead.
Paul, I know I had seen a report one time from MEG where they projected out traffic counts in terms of doing this project, and do you recall what it was? I thought it was like 20, 25, or beyond, whereby the traffic would be frequent, or the volume would be high enough to do the project. I know that's, that's out there someplace.
Yeah, I, you know, Councilman Leger, I would just be speculating if I gave you a number, I don't, I've seen something before.
I think that study has been done, that's my point. And those numbers are around, because I had seen them a few years, several years ago.
Based on the volumes, it could...
Yeah, mm-hmm, thank you.
To your point, Councilmember Leger, I've actually seen from MEG an overall map of the valley that shows by year, you know, the traffic volumes, and it's showing the major impacts and these projects as it's relating to the, the MEG Transportation Improvement Program. And of course, there, there's a lot of different funding sources for that. But I have seen, and this was one that I thought I saw in the outer years, like 25 or something like that, when this would be needed.
Yeah, I'm sure probably Randy could get us that, because he's on the transportation committee.
We can, we can look at giving that.
Councilman DePorter, did you, were you, was that you wanted to say something?
No, it was ours.
It was ours, okay. Sorry, you guys sound the same. Councilman Tolles?
No, the, the answer was just, you just answered the question, so thank you.
Okay, all right, can we go on?
Next project is wayfinding signage. This came out of the council retreat. This project would remove, there's 36 brown wayfinding signs that were installed in 1999, 2000, and this project would allow development services staff to issue an RFP, to have a firm look at coming up with a comprehensive sign package town-wide, help visitors locate our public facilities, parks, lodging, business areas, and have it tie into the town's branding and tourism efforts.
Okay. All right, let's go on.
So that's, that's the projects that we're currently showing in the 1718.
Okay.
If, to Councilmember Magazine's point, if we, if we did, with all the revenues we're expected to get in, except for the general fund money carryover, if we were to do all those projects with the current available funding, we would be short 100,000, approximately $100,000. Now, we're anticipating general fund money coming in, carryover, so we're fairly confident that those would be funded.
Okay, before we get on to the future, you want to decide on these?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
You got a list?
I do.
Good, okay.
So, they are all very important for the town of Fountain Hills, for the livability and for the, for the economic growth of Fountain Hills. These are all very important, and I, as I go through and look at the numbers, like the, the big numbers, the fire station at 3.24, and that's actually coming out of the capital improvement funds, and then the trailhead is, is contributing 468,000, excuse me, dollars out of the, out of the CIP. I'm saying that you go down each one of the items, all 17 items that we've talked about this evening. At the end of the day, I'm going to guess that the estimates that are before us are probably a million, from, from three-quarters of a million to a full million dollars heavy, that we won't spend all the money that we're actually looking at... that we're actually looking at on the estimates. And, and I think we need to take that into consideration as we're going through this process. But I see the items that are probably the most important would be the drainage out on Shea and the parking lot. I would like to see the avenue of the light, the lights at the avenue completed. Of course, the fire station, the chiller install, the trailhead. I would like to see the, the surveillance cameras to help minimize the damage and the theft to our town property. I would like to see the wayfinding signs. And I would like to see the Fountain Lake courtyard at a minimum for the fountain. And then in the middle range, I would like to see the balance of the Fountain Park drainage. I would like to see the alley paving. And I would like to see the, to go ahead and do the engineering for the Fountain Hills Boulevard widening. If we're going to unfund anything, I would say, let's get the grinder out and grind some more around the concrete around the Centennial Circle. Um, I have to ask on the town hall improvement, if that is going to be a, an economic development area, is there a possibility we could use a portion of the Downtown Economics Fund to help complete that area?
Paul, um, wasn't that considered for that?
Uh, we were showing the capital project fund.
There is a balance there. I, Craig, do you remember what the, the ED fund is?
Right now, it's just under a million dollars.
But the question would be, are we, are, can we use a portion of that fund if it's going to be strictly an economic development and parks and rec?
Mayor and councilmembers, um, the balance in the Economic Development Fund is not very large. We were planning on using a good part of it to fund a budget request that the Economic Development Director submitted.
That was for the, um, the marketing in lieu of a position for next year.
The majority of the funding that goes into the ED fund is spent for operations of either ED or tourism.
The, the other option could be is the downtown, I guess.
Downtown strategy is a possibility. And as Paul said, that it has a balance of about a million dollars.
Are there restrictions on that?
One thing to remember, the, the downtown fund is pretty amorphous in the description. But it's, we bridged over into economic development in order to use some of the downtown funds to fund the position that generates economic development. Doing a capital improvement for economic development purposes is kind of the next step into that area. So it's certainly not prohibited by the, the resolution because it's very wide open. But it's, it's another step further, just so we know where we're going.
Okay.
And if I could just follow up on, um, that, the projects that you saw last week that we, um, scaled back, those were primarily being funded from that fund. And as a result of reducing the funding for those projects that you saw tonight, there's a lot more of a balance there to fund projects.
Okay.
So the, I, I'd like to reiterate the unfunded area. That's the concrete around the Centennial Circle, uh, the town hall improvement. And, um, for this time since it's been this way for 20 years, the community center drainage. I would leave those as unfunded.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
Okay, Councilman Tolles?
I, I would, I would also move that we keep the $100,000 consulting fee to evaluate Fountain Hills Boulevard and, and try to put that, uh, to, um, the, the future as we continue to determine what we're going to do, or what we can do with the state trust land and whether or not it's going to be split up or whether we're going to have one developer. Uh, I think we can hold off on that. I think that this is not something that's, $100,000, uh, right now for that project, I think is premature. And then also, uh, the park improvements, and I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage, obviously, because I'm not sitting there with this screen in front of me as you are. But, uh, I did take a note in regards to the pathway down to the amphitheater. I, I, I think that right now, we, we need to hold off on any additional investment. I thought we talked about that at our last meeting in regards to that whole project of that down Fountain Hills, uh, Fountain, the Avenue of the Fountains and having that, uh, pathway and that view deck there. I thought that was kind of on the back burner. Uh, I'd like to continue to keep that on the back burner. I think that in the future, we may see some, um, we see some other opportunities for the park that, that it may take a priority to something like that. And I hate to have something built and then ultimately, uh, not, uh, not, uh, not tied in with what, what maybe some future investment in the park would be.
Madam Mayor? Dennis, I was going to ask, go, go back again because you didn't include that in your list, correct?
I did not include that. It's not included in this, in the 17 items.
So the ones that you wanted to bump were the one that he mentioned as well?
Yeah, that wasn't even presented, was it, Paul?
Yes, we had a, we had a $250,000 placeholder. The, um, Kim Lee Horn at the last meeting was asked to go back and look at, what could they make a connection from Park View with the stairs and the ADA sidewalk over by the amphitheater?
Okay.
Mayor?
I have to agree, we'd want to put that unfunded as well.
Okay.
So a total of four unfunded?
Correct.
Okay, Councilman Magazine?
It's getting a bit confusing. And I'm wondering if we couldn't go project by project, um, and, and make motions and vote on the projects.
Well, we just, we just, why don't we just look at the list and see if maybe we're all in agreement with, um, Councilman Brown? Because, um, Councilman Tolles just said he was in agreement, except he wanted to add design. So we've got the drainage on Shea, the avenue lights, the fire station, the chiller, the trailhead, the cameras, the wayfinding signs, uh, the courtyard and the design for, um...
To stay in.
Hmm?
To stay in.
Yes.
Okay, but, but, but the problem is, if you don't want to vote for the whole package, you may...
No, I'm just saying, if we do, then it would save us a lot of time if everybody was in agreement with those to start out with.
I'm not.
Okay, and which one would you feel doesn't belong in there?
Well, last week, we had quite a conversation about the downtown lighting improvements. As much as, I know some of us really wanted to see it. Uh, we decided the timing was not, that this was a nice to have, but not necessary. And so I would not include that one. Um, and I didn't write down the others, so if you could go through them, I can respond.
Sure, certainly. The drainage on Shea at the parking lot, at the overlook, the avenue, uh, lights, the fire station, the chiller install, the trailhead project, surveillance cameras, wayfinding signs, and the Fountain Lake courtyard bid out in two parts. And then the $100,000 to do the work on Fountain Hills Boulevard.
Well, Mayor, I have, uh, there are two that I have concerns about. One is the lights and the other is the, uh, the courtyard. Um, uh, I don't know, what's it called behind the shop?
Plaza Fountain Side.
Plaza Fountain Side.
All right, so, so this is getting really, I guess we could be here all night.
Well, hold on.
Doing this, um...
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Okay.
I don't, um, Councilman Magazine, would, would, would it work for you if we included this list going forward in our capital improvement project, for 1718, uh, with the caveat that, as we've done in the past, that these projects would have to come back to council for discussion? And that way, there would be an opportunity to evaluate them and, and, and vote on them? Which historically, well, forget historically. Um, most of our capital improvement plans, if you've looked at them, since I've sat in council and all of us, is that we typically don't do all the things that are on there anyways because we, we approach them as, as, as they come. And we look at our budget situation and so forth and so on. So anyhow, I was just looking for, I'm, I'm comfortable with the list, is all I'm saying. If, if there's a need to bring them back for further discussion, that could be one way of having another bite at the apple, if that's what you're looking for.
I'll agree that that's a good way to go right now without, we don't want to remove anything, remember? We just want to push things. But if we just say we're going to relook at it, then it could easily be pushed at a later date. But if it's possible to do all these, then we could do them.
Mayor, um, I want to be consigliatory. My, my concern, and I will go along with that, okay, just, um, but my concern is, the public is going to see these projects all listed in the newspaper. And I believe we'll have a lot of questions as a result. And that does concern me.
Hopefully, they'll come to council meetings and, um, and, and give us some feedback on those.
Yeah, right.
Or at least some emails. Sorry, Mayor.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, I just have one comment. Um, I appreciate Councilman Brown, uh, agreeing in regards to the $250,000 for the, uh, park, uh, path and stairs. I did also mention the $100,000 that was for the Avenue of the Fountains. And let me just clarify my thoughts on that. Um, while, while it's nice to have that information, we would then have to move, if we ever wanted to proceed with that project, to have the voters of Fountain Hills vote for a bond package to do that. And...
I'm sorry, which, what?
I guess the question...
Which one are you talking about? We're not quite clear on that.
Are you, you mean Fountain Hills Boulevard, not Avenue of the Fountains, correct?
That's, that's correct, Fountain Hills Boulevard.
Okay.
So my question, I guess, and maybe this is an Andrew question, is if, if we were ever going to be moving forward with some type of a bond package to do the improvements on that, could you write in the language of the, of, of the voter initiative that it's subject to the engineering report and, uh, a dollar value of X? I mean, how would, how would you do? I think we're putting the cart before the horses, putting $100,000 out there for consulting fees when we, we may, we may not even put that to the voters and we may never even do the project.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Tolles, the, uh, the $100,000 being discussed right now is a design concept report. After the design concept report, you would have actual engineering costs. All of those things would be done prior to going out for a bond issuance. Because the only thing that's really left to be done after a bond is approved is to actually let the contract. And we try very carefully to have the bond authority be as close to what we think we're going to need to spend for the project. And so we've got to be a long ways down the road in design and almost ready to build it by the time you put it out to the voters. So I think this is step one of three. And you'd have to do step one and two before you could ever put it on the ballot in the first place.
Okay, and, and I get the follow-up question to that is, in, realistically speaking, if we're, if we're able to move forward with some development agreements for that state trust land, uh, how long would it take? How long would it take to receive this, this report? This, this, this analysis that we're spending $100,000? What's the, what's the timeframe that once we say that we want to engage this $100,000 study, that we actually get a report? Is it 12 months? Is it three months? What, what's the timeframe?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Tolles, um, after we actually had a contract approved by council, you're probably looking at about six months.
Okay, and is this just one of these things that when you look at all of the fundings that we're potentially trying to balance, so to speak, if we're $100,000 shy? And now we're, actually, we're, we're adding on, uh, less, less that we're willing to fund, uh, as we discussed. But, uh, this is one of those things that could come back to council at some point and we say, hey, you know what, we have, we have, uh, real progress on the state trust land. We have, uh, a potential developer that's interested, willing and able, and we really want to move forward with this, that we could act on that accordingly. But it's something that, like Councilman Legay said, we could include in this. But ultimately, in, in the next fiscal year, we may not actually allocate those funds. Am I understanding this correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so is everyone then is in agreement with us? Do we need a vote on it or do you want us to make an official vote on it?
It appears that there's a consensus on that.
Consensus, okay.
Would you prefer a vote?
No, if the mayor would just repeat what we've agreed to, I'd be fine.
Well, we've agreed that we are going to include the items that Councilman Brown... Want to repeat them?
Sure, sure.
Yes, thank you.
The first item that I mentioned is the drainage on Shea at the overlooked parking lot. I have included the Avenue of the Light, Avenue of the Fountain Lights, the fire station, the chiller install, the trailhead, the surveillance cameras, the wayfinding signs, the Fountain Lake courtyard bid out in two parts, and the engineering study for the, um, Fountain Hills Boulevard.
And they would all be, and they would all be brought back.
With the consideration that they will be brought back, okay? Except for the fire station and the trailhead.
Second?
All right.
Um, Mayor Kavanaugh, can I get some clarification? I did not hear the shoulder paving, Fountain Hills Boulevard shoulder paving included.
Right.
I did not include that on the first pass either.
Not on the first.
Okay, so we are not going to do the Fountain Hills Boulevard shoulder paving?
The study.
The study.
No, they're two different projects.
Two different projects.
We have grant funding for that if we lose.
Yeah, we have grant funding, about half, half of it's grant funding.
Well, as, and as I said in my opening statement, that I truly believe that we're going to find, there's a million dollars left on the table, between three quarters of a million dollars on the estimates that are high on the, just the larger projects by themselves. So I, I would certainly like to see the, for as many years as we've waited to do the shoulders on Fountain Hills Boulevard, I would like to see that.
So you're adding that?
So we're adding shoulder paving?
What's the, the sunset on the grant?
It's...
Couple of years now.
It's like a year or two, it's getting close. We, we've, we've pushed it off as much as...
Okay.
Year after year after year.
No, I think that's great.
Okay, so we're all in agreement?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I don't hear anybody who isn't. I'm just waiting for somebody to say, no, you want to make that into a motion? Okay, that's a motion. Second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Seven, zero.
So as they're doing the design on the sho, on the Fountain Hill shoulders, Fountain Hill Boulevard shoulders, make certain they don't get out into the wash, would you?
Oh, they're not, they're not. So as I'm going through these projects, I just, I just want to be crystal clear. So the, the drainage, the storm drain around the Community Garden is going to get pushed out?
That's pushed out.
Pushed out. We're leaving in the lights. We're pushing out the, um, concrete around the Centennial Circle. We'll continue grinding concrete.
Correct.
We're pushing out the shell space.
Yes.
We're doing the trailhead. We're pushing out, doing anything with the access into Fountain Park.
Park access.
So we're not going to have Kim Lee Horn go back and look at anything?
Nope.
Okay. The, the drainage improvements to Fountain Park on the corner. We're not, something technically, we're violating our reclaimed water use permit.
Well, if we're violating something, that should have been part of the presentation.
I'm sorry.
So, I mean...
Is there anything else that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, is there, maybe we look at something else other than taking out all the turf?
We can look at something, we'll, we'll look at it.
Maybe we look at something a little more simpler than that? It sounds like a major project just to handle some drainage. All right, can we do that before, yes?
Okay.
Something on...
And Mayor, Mayor, that's a good point that Councilman Brown just brought up. If, if that was part of that, if, if that language was part of the presentation or if our town has been served with some type of documentation that we're in violation, uh, I think that would be a very, very important component to this presentation.
Okay, well, yeah, we're, let's just see if we can do something a little less drastic just to stop that runoff without taking out all that turf. I'd hate to lose that whole section of the park.
We're, we're pushing out the alley paving?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, really? And the Shea widening?
And the Shea widening.
Yeah, we're pu, we're pushing out the design concept report on the Shea widening. We're, we are doing the shoulder paving. We are doing the design concept report to Fountain Hills Boulevard?
Mm-hmm.
With the caveat that that's coming back to council. With the caveat that that's coming back to council.
Before we start doing it?
Yes.
Okay. We are doing the wayfinding signs. Okay.
Okay. All right, the rest is unfunded. That's easy.
Most of them are unfunded. Now, we're going to go through the outer four years. Now, there could be something in here at the end that you might want to move into the current fiscal year, or move around.
All right.
The first project is Fire Station Number Three. Per the town's fire master plan, this is the design and construction of Fire Station Number Three, near Sun Ridge Drive and Desert Canyon Drive. This is projected for the fiscal year 2021, '22. Currently, unfunded amount is approximately $2.7 million, and we're showing $46,000 of development fees. That will increase as more projects come in. This is one of two projects. This is the only project we collect fire development fees for currently, and there's one other park project. And then, in the left, kind of the bottom left of the fire station in the green, that's the Pocket Park. That's per the general plan. So, those two projects, you more than likely would want to do together.
Okay.
This, the next project is the Fire Station Number Three equipment. This is to purchase the fire truck, brush truck, portable radios, the breathing apparatus for the firefighters, thermal imaging camera, Jaws of Life, so all the equipment that the firefighters that are actually working at the station will need.
Okay.
Then, the Pocket Park West, as I mentioned earlier, this is, per the general plan, this is a Pocket Park to serve the west part of town. And it's kind of tight in that area, so what we're showing is a play structure for five and under, a play structure for five and over, and then a Ramada picnic area, and then some And then, I'll let Mark talk about the upcoming park projects.
A couple of years ago, we redid the master plan for Four Peaks Park. So, what we're proposing here in the future is to develop that park based on the new master plan that was done. One major change has taken place. If you recall, we had redone the tennis courts. Originally, under this master plan, we're going to be flipped to the other side of the park, but that wasn't possible under the grant that we had with the timing that was in front of us. So, that's going to remain as it was. So, the basketball court will stay on that east side of the park. But there is, the master plan was developed with a number of meetings with the neighborhoods to try to develop something that was not only compatible with the usage of the park, but also compatible with the neighborhood. So, what you see there is the project costs associated with it. I think going forward, we can reduce those costs even further. There are a number of picnic shelters that potentially could be eliminated, and still, I think, very adequately serve the park, but we could save some substantial dollars there. But we showed a grant, certainly a potential for some grants, but the balance of it being unfunded.
Mm-hmm.
Fountain Park, Lake Quali, you may recall a report from Dr. Mulphy and some consultants back late last fall, talking about if we made some substantial improvements after the aeration that we're putting in now, that would include some storage of water that was highly treated, coming from, directly from the treatment plant, that would replace the water that we're using for irrigation purposes, would then put us in a position where we could treat the water adequately and not have to worry about utilizing water that we have to now monitor, that we can't put algicide and things like that into, because we're putting it on the turf. So, not inexpensive. Again, it was to have some storage tanks, either above ground or below ground, and it was also to include updates to our controllers, which are all original controllers, which don't allow us the flexibility to have anything other than all on or all off. And then, finally, the possible inclusion of a variable frequency drive, which will allow us to do things like adjust the height of the fountain. And so, on days when it was super windy, we now don't have the capability of running the fountain. We could now run it at a reduced height. So, people who are coming here, tourists, that kind of thing, that we get, people are complaining because the fountain's not going up because of the wind speed. So, it would certainly mitigate that, as well as cut our utility costs.
Did we ever just find out how much those variable speed drives would cost?
I don't recall, Mayor Kavanaugh, if they had separated those costs in the proposal. My recollection is they did, but I don't recall what that number is.
Okay. Be good to have for the future.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm going to turn this portion over to Park Supervisor Kevin Snipes, because he's much more familiar with field lighting than I am.
I'm here to speak about the sports field lighting, and this is a conversion over to LED lights from Muscat. It provides the ability to basically localize where the light's going there. They can make it to where the 10 feet outside the field, it would be pitch black. Above the lights, you wouldn't see, you can still see the skyline above the lights. They've come a long way with the LED technology. It's absolutely amazing to look at. The 25-year projection for maintenance savings for Golden Eagle would be at about $808,000, based off of doing 20 light poles. And then, doing Four Peaks Park at 17 light poles, the 25-year savings would be around $549,000. The cost for install for Golden Eagle is $1,340,000, and for Four Peaks, it is $393,000. The lights do come with a 25-year warranty, as long as the poles are able to be used, which they are at Four Peaks. They are not at Golden Eagle, unfortunately, because of the age of them, that they still would do a 10-year warranty on the fixtures for Golden Eagle Park as well. It would also provide a brighter play surface, and it would definitely reduce our number of complaints for light pollution. So, that's the main, huge benefits of it. I mean, when you look at them, they show pictures of them, and literally, you can see a dot of light that reflects off the pole and nothing else, instead of the big ball of light that you see on any of our structures that we have now. So.
Mayor.
Councilman Yates?
First, Kevin, thanks for staying and coming. Thank you, Mrs. So, in round numbers, million seven total cost, $800,000 savings on the, over 25 years for Golden Eagle, and $500,000 rounding in Four Peaks. And 20-year warranty on Four Peaks and 10 years on?
25 years at Four Peaks and 10 years at Golden Eagle, using existing poles. We're waiting to see numbers on what it would cost to actually do the poles to go along with it, and we'll get that at a future date.
Okay. Thank you.
Do some of our, some of our poles have been used as cell towers, aren't they? Right now, some of the parks?
Desert Vista.
Yeah, we have one on the soccer field at Desert Vista. We have another one at Four Peaks Park by the tennis courts.
Do we make, what kind of revenue do we get from that?
It's actually processed, I had a discussion with the finance director at the time, in July 1. So, the money goes into the general fund, not into the parks fund, but I don't recall what that amount was. It's fairly substantial. I don't recall what the number is.
Mayor? Mayor, this is Art. Can you, I just have clarification. I like the idea of complying with the Dark Skies Initiative and doing all we can to have the lighting that we're responsible for adhere to those standards. Has the Dark Skies Committee leaders been involved in these discussions at all, and should they be in any way?
If I can answer that, if you don't mind. These, no, they have not been involved, but per the ordinance that the council adopted, parks and sports facilities are specifically exempted. And so, if the town, at some point, were to go to a Dark Skies community designation, my understanding that this would be one of those that would be exempted out. The other thing that Kevin mentioned, and I happen to look at the literature on this, it's completely amazing when you look at these lights. They look like a headlight a mile or two away. It's just, you don't see that bright glare in the air, and it's interesting, because I think that the Dark Skies Committee would really appreciate this, but that's just the way the technology's been going. Now, these are still going to be, I believe, what was it, a 5,000 or 7,000 Kelvin color on this?
5,000, yes.
Yeah, so, they're going to be still very bright, and once you're on the field, they just light up like it's daylight, but you don't get the bleed into the sky like you typically get with these types of lights.
Yeah, the field surface will be much brighter than what they are currently, is what we're looking at for Golden Eagle, and it'll be the same or a little bit brighter than what it is now at Four Peaks, just on doing a different light setup.
Okay.
Mayor, I think that's fantastic, and I think that while we exempt these areas, we would, we should, and it sounds like we are, do all we can to get as close as possible to the standards that they would, that they would be in approval of.
And then, I don't know if Kevin mentioned this or not, but we also, we met last week to identify potential projects for grants, and this was one of them. Apparently, one of the grant workshops that staff attended found that, in addition to the traditional grant sources that we have, a number of the major league sports teams also make available grants, and lighting is one that, was it Diamondbacks?
Mm-hmm.
That is very active with. So, we're going to, we're going to seek some funding sources, but because this is not in the CIP for next year, it's one that we won't be applying for, because we'll have to match whatever we get. So, we don't have funding really available for this.
Okay. And just before we go on, I just want to finish my thought before about the cell towers. Are we actively pursuing the possibility of putting cell towers in more locations if we're getting substantial revenue from that? I mean, all the churches are putting them in, there's a lot of locations around town. Maybe we should be trying to get some of that revenue in for us. Councilman Brown, did you say you knew how much it was, or?
At one time, I was told the average is about $750 bucks a month for rental on a cell tower.
And I think Andrew has a more updated number, because I think at one point, it was, but our more current numbers, as we've been renewing our leases, are?
Two bucks? Two fifty?
It depends upon the size of the site and what they're asking for, but typically, it's more like $1,500 to $2,000 a month.
Oh.
It's substantial revenue, but these are for the macro sites, the tall sites, you know, the hidden cactuses, all of those things. Those sites are driven by the need of the carrier, so they'll, they'll come and ask. If they have a hole in their coverage, they'll come and solicit the town, or school district, or whoever has the right spot, depending upon verticality in the town. What's coming down the road for us is not necessarily the macro sites, it's the micro sites that go within the town right of way and hang on traffic signals and other things. And right now, there's a bill moving through the legislature to completely preempt our ability to do anything about those, and to charge no more than $50 a year for each one of those sites.
Oh, yeah. We're trying to kill that one.
Yeah, it's going to make it a different landscape.
Okay, let's go on. Alley paving.
All right, as we discussed before, this is the phase five of the alley paving, and this is, we had it for next fiscal year, but we moved it out into 2018, '19, so this is probably where we would move the phase four to this year, and we would probably look at moving this one out another year as well. The two alleys, one we're calling the Glenbrook Alley, this is off of Glenbrook, and it kind of swings around up to Fountain Hills Boulevard. And the Rand Alley is from Rand to Sioux, and it's behind the school district's transportation facility where they house their buses. So, these are the other two alleys that the town has that we will need to pay for the PM-10 mitigation at some point.
Okay. Next.
The monument signs on Shea, this is a placeholder, $100,000 from the CIP fund to redo the monument signs, to make them more in line with the town branding and update them. This is just a placeholder. The one on the left is the Western Town Limits, as you come in from Scottsdale. There's no electricity out there. We do have a solar floodlight installed that we're testing. It does come on at dusk. We're not sure when it, it's not on at 5:30 in the morning when I come in, so we're not sure, quite sure how long it lasts right now. But if anybody wants to drive by there at midnight, let us know if the light's on.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one on the right is the Eastern Town Limits, as you drive in off the Beeline onto Shea. This is where the old large flagpole was. So, behind this wall is the old area where all that equipment for the cell tower was. And this does have electricity that's mounted to the back of this wall, and you can see the two floodlights that are in front. So, this lights up from dusk to dawn.
Okay.
Mayor, I had a question, if I may. What would it cost us to electrify the Western Town Limit?
I did have a conversation with our street superintendent, and roughly, at a minimum, we're anticipating $10,000 to $15,000. There's no electricity in the area. Just to get SRP to do their design in a meter is quite expensive.
The reason I mention that is that is the gateway to our town. It's important for that to be lit up. We talk about marketing and way, you know, signs and such. That is the sign that needs to be lit up.
Yeah, that floodlight that's, when it works, it is actually, it lights it up.
Oh, it's awesome when you come in the Beeline at night on the other side.
The one on the, the solar one really works well, too.
Oh, okay.
But it just doesn't, it's not lasting, it's not lasting the full evening hour or nighttime hours right now, so.
How about a, does it have a solar panel?
It does have a solar panel. It does have a solar panel.
Okay, well, we'll just test it out, I guess.
Yeah, we're testing it. We did not include the monument sign that's on McDowell Mountain Road by the school, because whenever that state trust land develops, actually, the town limit is two miles to the north, but whenever that state trust, land trust develops, they will probably reconfigure that road, and maybe in the development agreement, it's put in that they have to do a new monument sign.
Mayor, if I may, you know, this is a topic that I brought up with our town manager back in January, and I couldn't agree more with Councilman Member Lojai, that this is very important to have a monument sign that's lit and really shows the quality of our community, and just is a very welcoming sign. I'm questioning whether we have, if there's no electricity over there right now, I got to imagine that there's technology out there, that we're going to have a light that you can use solar or something, and I appreciate that we've been in testing phase for a couple of months now, and I appreciate everyone's efforts to try to get the right light out here. But what about Eagle Mountain Golf Course, and whether or not they may be willing to cooperate with us to run some sort of a, I mean, this doesn't have to be, this is not an electrical line that, you know, we're not looking at 220 here. We're, this is going to be something that's going to just illuminate that light, and, you know, they have irrigation systems, they have, they have electrical needs on that golf course. Maybe there's a way we can tie in, and they'd be willing to cooperate and help us. I don't know if that's an option, but something that I think I would look at.
Yeah, we can look into it. I don't know, yeah, we can talk to the golf courses, see if they have anything in the area, and see if they'd be willing.
Okay.
Yeah. The closest thing that the Eagle Mountain HOA has is actually their monument sign up at the Eagle Mountain Drive. This is the final project. It's a traffic signal at Palisades and Eagle Ridge Drive slash Palomino. This is, you'll be seeing the Copperwind Development Agreement, and there is some provisions in there for some cost participation for this intersection. I believe the way the development agreement reads, it's their phase three, which I don't think has a hard, that's their final phase. Don't believe it has a hard date, so I don't know when that is, so we programmed it in for 2019, '20, and this estimated at $450,000.
Mayor.
Councilman Magazine?
This reminded me, have we looked at all at doing anything perhaps other than a traffic circle at La Montana and Avenue of the Fountains?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilman Magazine, we are, we have a contract with CK Engineering, and they're doing, they're doing a intersection. and they're doing, they're doing a intersection analysis right now.
Um.
So in the next month or two, they'll, they're, they're looking at the four-way stop traffic signal roundabout.
So they're looking at all the, their options, yeah? Great, thank you.
With that, this, this shows the five years, very, very front-loaded as we went through. There's approximately 8.4 million in the first five years, or the first year, and then the total is $23.9 million, and most of that in the four years is, is unfunded right now.
Could I just go back and just about what you said about the La Montana intersection? Was that something that the council decided to do to do a study on that, or?
Yes, um, we had, we had three studies that were budgeted for this year. We had the, the Shea and Fountain Hills Boulevard intersection and the Palisades and?
Palisades and Shea.
Shea intersection. This one, if you remember, there was a recent incident, was like a year and a half ago or so, and we had a lot of people come to the council to complain about the location. This is not a foregone conclusion as to what will actually be done there. It's just to study it and to make recommendations as to what, if any, traffic mitigation needs to happen there.
Yeah, and those studies live in the Development Services Engineering Budget.
Okay. All right, any other questions? That's our?
So for these outer years, we're leaving the projects as shown, or do you want me to? So I guess the next question is, the, the projects that were in the, for next fiscal year that we want to bump, do you just want to bump them one year and then we'll revisit them next year? And I'm going to assume the alley paving, both of those will bump one year each.
Right.
And as I understand it, the council tonight, what they did was they indicated that all the projects that are in the CIP for next year, with the exception of Adaro Canyon Trailhead and the fire station, will come back to council before we initiate the projects. Is that what I heard correctly?
That's right.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody from the public out there, so I guess we don't have any speaker cards. I will check. Okay, then there's no more discussion or questions, and I just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, for calling in.
Thank you.